I'm adding. That's the level of so tree.
Yeah, six o'clock on the dock.
Let's say I want to go ahead and call this meeting to order. All the Aldermen are pleasant, uh, present except Alderman and Blackman. We will have, uh, Mr. Glorioso will lead us in the invocation and Alderman Wade, uh, in the pledge.
By his valiant head. Heavenly Father, we come before you today in humility and faith. We thank you for all you have given us and many blessings in our lives. We ask for your guidance and strength, show us the way and fill us with courage and wisdom. Help us remember your love and grace and to be faithful in our service to you. Give us the patience and understanding to face life's challenges with grace. We ask these things in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Is there a motion to approve this?
Some move.
Got a motion by Alderman Wade, second by Alderman Pfeifer. Favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've got a couple of presentations tonight. The first one will be the Historic Ocean Springs Association Tree Canopy Renewal Project. Ms. Melanie and Ms. Julia. Thank you for coming tonight.
Tag Tina. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to be quite quick this evening. I am here on behalf of Julia and myself and Jose to talk about the Ocean Springs Tree Canopy Renewal Project and to announce that we have been awarded a $50,000 plea and safe water community grant to be used for efforts to restore and protect vital native tree canopy across the Ocean Springs community. Savior, pause. We're excited we have to bring this good news to the city. We see this grant as a win for the tree canopy all over Ocean Springs today and for generations to come. This is a 24-month grant and we see this as an opportunity for us to... This is not a win for us, it's a win for everybody. We will give, have an opportunity to work with you, with neighborhood associations, residents and businesses to design and implement a proactive tree planting plan. And to accomplish this, the money as we see it will be pretty much split 50/50. 50% in actually planting trees, which we see actually 500 trees in the ground over this period of time. And the other will be working in a, to provide data so that we do this in a smart method. And we've sort of, um, and we will be employing the professional team at the Gulf Coast Community Design Studio, which is the professional arm of Mississippi State University. They have landscape architects and urban planners there. And we've talked before about using aerial photography and data that's, uh, that tells us where trees are and where they are not. We talked about having a data-driven inventory of the trees in the town, in the town as they are now and where we'd like them to be. We talked about paying for that. But Julia was in touch with Mississippi Forestry Commission. The forestry commission is in the process of doing that inventory at this time and they're doing it pro bono. Essentially, to be, I'm going to be short about this and say this. We've all suffered and suffer is probably a little strong. I suffered with it, but we worked through the issue of comprehensive plan. And this grant in many ways allows us to do a natural capital comprehensive plan. We will do an inventory, we can do a data-driven plan about our tree canopy. And for many of us, we see the trees that are beautiful downtown. But this project will have a facilitated meeting in all six wards. The data will be presented in all six wards specifically. The meetings will show options in all six wards, possible streetscapes, the impact it will have in that ward. And we will also have a separate meeting to have professionals to, to deal with Daryl's department, to deal with the builders, the contractors, the folks who are out there, um, dealing with the ordinances and the rules that the city runs by, the folks who are possibly parking things under the roots of trees, the folks who have to deal with silt fences, let them know what the rules are, um, get their input. And so let, have one meeting that defines and gathers information as we go forward as a town. So this gives us an opportunity for a 10-year comprehensive plan for the Ocean Springs Tree Canopy. I'm going to turn this over to Julia now because I'm so excited I really can't... Thank you.
And thank you to Melanie for authoring the grant application. It is our third time out and the first time, two times we, we were declined, so, uh... But, um, we talked before about, um, how we all love the live oaks, but it's very important that we not have a forest of just live oaks. They're not appropriate everywhere and heaven forbid if we had a blight or a pest. We want a diverse native canopy, so we're going to be working with property owners and explaining, you know, the benefits of probably 12 different kinds of trees, some that are storm resistant, that would be either very small or very light in the tops, so that if you have a concern, if you, um, have a small lot, uh, we've talked many times about how important it is not to plant under utility lines. We're going to be very cognizant of conflicts with utility lines, driveways, homes, sidewalks. So, uh, everybody has a, a special, um, layout of their lot and what they're looking for and what trees can do to benefit the public. And, um, so we'll be looking for, uh, property owners to weigh in and tell us what their goals are and then we'll work with them to, to meet their goals with this variety of native trees. Some of them have beautiful, um, flowers, some of them have beautiful berries, some are great for shade, some are great for birds. So people will be able to, uh, pick a tree that is great for what their goals are. And we look, we are going to rely on the city for you to help us, help introduce us to your property owners and your neighbors and your voters and help us get to know your wards. And we really look forward to, uh, work with you, um, over the next two years. We're just real excited and wanted to let everybody know.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. And, uh, finding those places are not easy to do when you start talking about the utility lines above, then you start thinking about the utilities underground, the sewer lines, and it, it's not easy to find places for all the trees. It sounds like it'd be easy, but it's not.
That number, 811, whoever they are, they're going to get tired of hearing that.
Thank you all. Okay, and our next presentation will be Ms. Sarah Cockish with the Mary C. O'Keefe. 2025 report. How are you, Ms. Sarah?
I'm doing well, thank you. Can I give you a little bit? I'm going to start a timer after myself. Because I've been known as a cocklepot. All right, you guys, um, good evening, Mayor and Board of Aldermen. Uh, thank you for having me tonight and for the opportunity to address this board. For the first time, I'm excited to update you all on how the Cultural Center has been doing this year. My name is Derek Cockish and I'm the Art and Culture Director for the City of Ocean Springs. Over the last four years, I've had the pleasure of rebuilding the business and providing purpose to the Mary C. Cultural Arts Center. Our mission at the Co-, at the center is connecting community with creatives through arts-based education and experiences. The Mary C team consists of myself, our admin Katrina Kirsch, and lobby concierge Debbie Prey. These ladies are my day-to-day crew who help with rentals, events, and keeping the facility open Tuesday through Saturday 10 to 4 p.m. Everyone else on the team is subcontracted and their hours vary from week to week. Adam Meadows is available to assist Debbie at the front desk for a few hours twice a week. Our night crew who work at events and rentals consists of two theater technicians, Chris Duncan and Mason Holland, Cat Johnson, who also helps with the website, and Taylor Soscher, who handles custodial alignment. Our behind-the-scenes crew is comprised of several creative subcontractors. Lucas McCarthy helps with beautiful content creation and Devin Carter schedules our crazy social media carousel, as we call it. And, uh, last but not least, Dr. Pat Benson, who curates Duckie Gallery and the History Museum Quarterly. This year, for the first time, we're excited to have Derek Cockish with Paul Mett, um, be a guest curator for a few of the local creatives' art gallery exhibitions. He's the first person I've entrusted to help me put up a show of the local creatives' gallery besides Ms. Pat since it was established seven years ago. So that's my crew. Next, thank you. The Cultural Center's business model is based around rentals, programming, and product sales while staying true to our purpose of being a creative hub for activity in the community. Mary C has two art galleries, Duckie Gallery and the Creative Art Gallery, custom-made gift shop in the lobby, a book theater, culinary cafe, youth art room, and conference library room on the first floor. Upstairs, three rooms and the entire hallway are dedicated to the Ocean Springs History Museum. Two rooms are open studios, a sensory room takes up a third studio space, a media room, and a room to house the Ocean Springs artifacts. In 2017, I was working as a full-time artist and had just moved my studio, the New York City of Ocean Springs, uh, from Jackson, Mississippi. In effort to connect with my like-minded artists, I started a creative entrepreneurs networking group called the Local Creatives. After a year of showing in different local galleries, the group was invited into the Mary C to transform their current gift shop into the Local Creatives Art Gallery at the time. It was, uh, it has been one of my greatest pleasures curating the gallery since 2018 and I had no idea this would eventually be a group that gave life back to the Mary C and helped open the doors again to the community in a matter of three months. Through Local Creatives, I started partnerships with the Mary C and quickly opened the opportunity to the public. Since 2021, the Mary C has gained 60 partners who help create activity and bring programming and events to the building. Thirty-seven of our 60 partners are active. This has been a 23% increase in partner activity since 2024. The partnerships at the Mary C have been our way of connecting back into the community by generating activity with groups or individuals who are essentially extending a branch of their studio or business into our artistic center. Every spring, we choose creative entrepreneurs to work with and establish different levels of activity during the year. If a group or individual brings yearly, quarterly, monthly, or weekly activity and has their own audience or the means to build their audience, we support their growth by providing a platform for their ideas, help promote their program or event, and keep the facility clean and ready for partner activity rotation in each room. Partners do have a responsibility to promote themselves equally and also keep their spaces ready for the next activity. To keep a good working dynamic, we host biennial partner meetings to provide reminders and give updates on the building or our policies. We also have a partner section that lists reminders in our monthly e-glass. Currently creating a partner page on the website that essentially breaks down our definitive guide to being a Mary C partner. Next, please. Um, what you're seeing on this slide is a culmination of our partners' activities. Wait, where does this go? Where does this? Program is on. Is there a partner activity highlight? Oh, this is the old presentation.
It's on the, uh...
Thank you. Okay. I'll do it, okay. What you're seeing on this slide is a culmination of some of our partners' activities. Oh, yeah, so maybe some of those numbers didn't look right before. Anyways, y'all forget what it is. Okay. It's a culmination of our partners' activities. We have monthly offerings such as a market on the lawn called First Saturday Collective that is brought to you, uh, that is brought to the community by our partnership with Taylor Hunter, who started the St. Fire Festival, a poets' cafe that was started by the Mary C and is run by our writing partner Laura Terzakos. This group meets on the first Thursday of the month. Through our partnerships, we have also established seasonal class rosters, lectures, workshops, supper clubs, makerspace studios, and so much more. Something different that we got ourselves into this year was Tea with Mary C, an original play written by Deborah Watts, who was a 19-year world pageant at the Mary C several years ago. She fell in love with the building and the story of Mary C. O'Keefe. Once produced and performed, we filmed the play to offer as an educational lesson during field trips and other appropriate tours of the building. This year, we also established a digital fabrication shop through our partnership with Engraving Hub, also known as Brian Millen. Last year, I applied for a grant through the Jackson County Chamber and was able to purchase two 3D printers for the shop. Brian brought in several laser cutters and there's also a vinyl cutter and small CNC router from my studio that makes up the makerspace. We had our first workshop over the summer and it was well-attended with excitable kiddos who were able to make their designs in 2D and 3D forms. Next. Before we move on, I'd like to take a moment to highlight a project we started last year with partner Jessie Coffin. She's a licensed social and emotional learning teacher and has brought a sensory room to the Mary C. Jessie has been providing SEL lessons to 30 students in the sensory room that have made quite the impact on children who are severely challenged in communicating and learning. The sensory room was first an exhibit for the community and the Local Creatives Gallery, but with its increased popularity, we moved it upstairs permanently and it is kept open to the public when not in use for a private lesson. Next. Rosters are how we keep the public's expectations of our class offerings. We have four roster seasons per year. We offer about a dozen programs each. This year, we have offered a total of 59 classes, which is in line with last year's class offerings. We had 52 of the 59 classes made. And during the spring, summer, and fall semester alone, we had 185 individuals in it. Okay? Um, this year, we shut down half the building for a historic restoration on the west side. However, it didn't slow visitors down. We have a whopping 57.2% increase in visitors during our open hours. So far, we've had 7,880 visitors with a projection of 9,400 visiting a year. This time last year, we had just over 5K visitors. These numbers do not reflect after our events or shows. Um, our theater performances have also increased by nearly 30%. We have had CP7 performances so far this year, whereas this time last year, we had made it to 52 performances and this does not include multiple performance nights. Next. The building was in need of some love, so in the last few years, we have received, we have revived the original wooden floors, resupplied the theater and culinary kitchen with the appropriate equipment, put a fresh coat of paint in just about every studio or room in the building, had significant elevator and AC unit repairs done, and have just wrapped up an extensive historic restoration on the west side. Anything that you see in orange is developed. So you'll see the digital fabrication shop is not part of the actual Mary C because it's in Tacony. Um, it's actually the old, um, wood shop that was in Tacony. Um, it was the only space we had with, um, three-phase power and, uh, exterior ventilation, so that worked out really nicely. Anything you see in that redish color is in development, anything in yellow is gathering close. Next. Now that the artifacts are in the building, I'm working with Dr. Pat Pinson and a small curatorial team to create a storyline down the second floor hallway utilizing the artifacts. We are fixing and cleaning the artifacts, giving display and story to each object and category within the expansion. The museum expansion will cover topics such as Native Americans, art, business, education, the railroad and turpentine industries, tourists, and more, dating from pre-1699 to the early 1900s. Next. Currently, we have a custom-designed fence being fabricated and installed by St. Fire Fabrications. The fence is meant to help activate the underutilized outdoor stage and courtyard area on the west side of the building. In the last few years, I designed the fence based off of our logo pulling from the architectural characteristics of the building. Archives in History has approved the design and we are excited to see development, that this development project come to fruition. Next. In the theme of development, we have another project underway in the media room upstairs. A new partnership with Take Action, also known as John Reyes and Reese Gibson, will provide technicians for the media room and its services. Starting in the new year, the Mary C will be bringing back our podcast and recording services. We are currently renovating the room to allow small live audiences to view recordings by adding simple auditorium seating under the windows on the east side of the room. And across from the seating on the opposite wall, we are adding a small stage for live performances. The, the idea is to host intimate concerts similar to the Tiny Desk Concert Series that have become so popular over the last decade. Beyond that, we hope to establish a subscription-based platform on our website for viewers to enjoy performances at home. Next. Every year, we host special events that are all free to the public. Our largest production is Spooky Springs at the Scary Sea, where we team up with the Ocean Springs High School Theater to transform the building into a haunted house along with family-friendly activities and games on the lawn. In partnership with One More Sleep Production, we produce the OS Cemetery Tour, taking the community on a guided tour through a chosen cemetery. Our town's Christmas tree lighting is also hosted at the Mary C lawn the first Thursday in December. We also team up with our partners for other exciting events such as the Mississippi Songwriters Festival with the Mississippi Songwriters Alliance, the OS Jewelry and Arts Fair with the Jim and Merrill Club, Earth Day with the Ocean Springs Environmental Alliance, and our newest event, Taco Fest in OS with Shefty. This past year, the Mary C took on the Six Month Friday at the Fort Concert Series in Fourth of July during the transition of our administration. These events will go to the Chamber of Commerce moving into the new year. We have also been a part of the New Year's Eve drop and that I teamed up with MC Partner Brian Millen with Engraving Hub to fabricate the ball that we drop each year. This year will be our third year of drop ball. Next. We've come so far in the short four years. Looking forward, my goal for the Mary C is first and foremost to continue to provide opportunities for creative entrepreneurs, also to keep establishing usable, equipped studio and programming, um, maker spa-, and makerspace usability. I'd love to come as close to finishing the OS History Museum expansion project as possible, though I'm learning this is going to be a long process. Restore and give purpose to every inch of the building, genuinely protect the good energy established by staff, partners, and the public, and most of all, keep the Mary C a safe space for creativity. Where do we grow from here? Growth can look like many different things. For us, it's always been activity-based and focused on partner success and, and investment. I want to make what we've established over the last four years run as smoothly as possible. Please feel free to come to me with any questions that I'm sure you'll have after this presentation. I welcome any curiosity and support and may have to off, and that you may have to offer towards the big question of where do we grow from here? Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you very much. That was nice and looking forward to another successful, successful year.
Does anyone have any questions?
Have any questions from the board?
I do want to talk to you more about that media room. I looked interested.
Yes, absolutely.
Just a comment.
Absolutely. And also, I provided you all with all of our contracts that we have, this is how we do business with our partners or the public. I, we don't have to go into that in public. It's just something to go and add that already isn't it to the board just so everybody is aware of how we do things. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Public Comment. The public is invited to address the board for up to five minutes each for a maximum period of 30 minutes, only regarding issues listed on this agenda. Please identify yourself and the agenda item when you speak. Do we have anybody like to speak? Like? No good. We will move on to old business. I think that, is that the first? All right, old business. We have a resolution of intent to grant an ad valorem abatement to Ocean Springs Senior Development LLC. David, you want to address this?
This was the resolution that the, um, based on our last meeting when the board voted to grant the tax abatement resolution. Um, I did want to point out that in the resolution, the, um, Phase 1 abatement, based upon the resolutions of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors, uh, would end on February the 4th of 2029. And then the Phase 2 abatement, although the resolution from the Jackson County Board was dated January the 18th of 2022, when you read that, that resolution, uh, the abatement started in 2021, so that abatement would end January the 1st of 31 to coincide with the, uh, the one granted by Jackson County. That was the thing, the, the timing of it is what I wanted to point out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to, uh?
I'll make a motion. Second.
We got a motion by Alderman Stennis, second by Alderman Pfeifer. We'll need a roll call vote. Uh, Steve?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Aye.
Okay, passes. All right, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. Does anyone have anything to pull from the Consent Agenda?
I'll pull H.
H. Anybody have anything else? Okay, do we have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion by Alderman Hinton, second by Alderman Wade. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item H, Ms. Flair.
No, I just was gonna talk about these minutes. It was the first time we had had a full transcript attached and I kind of like that. I don't know if we're going to continue with it, but, um, it might be a good idea as a board to do. And then I, in that I had, uh, I guess a clarification where I was talking about the, um, draft MOE we want to put together for the chamber and it said, I mentioned exterior funds and it should say taxpayer funds.
That's what's corrected earlier today.
Was it? Okay, did not see that correction.
Also, I had something on there, um...
On H?
Yes, on H. Alderman Wade made a motion that had like three rolled up in one and it said I voted, um, A, but I didn't vote A or nay.
Well, if you don't vote.
You don't vote it.
Okay. It goes in the majority.
It did.
Okay.
It's recorded as.
Unless you say you abstain or...
Okay.
But I think it would still end up as saying.
All right. So do we have a motion to accept item H?
I'll make a motion, accept H.
Okay, we got a motion by Alderman Pfeifer.
Second.
Second by Alderman Tillis, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, Department reports. We got a docket of claims. Does anybody have anything to pull from the docket of claim? If not, is there a motion to approve the docket of claim?
So moved.
We got a motion from Alderman Hinton.
Second.
Second from Alderman Pfeifer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kitty? We got the monthly budget report. Anyone have any questions on the monthly budget report?
Or comments.
Or comments. Either or. If not, do we have a motion to accept the monthly budget report?
I'll make a motion to accept.
We got a motion to accept, Alderman Pfeifer.
Second.
Second by Alderman Tillis, I mean Stennis, I'm sorry. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Christine, we have budget amendments.
Sure. Okay, so, last year, when we ended the year, right at the end of the year, we did a final budget amendment. And that was because with the new board, we were only allowed to do one budget amendment till the end of the year. Then going into approval of this budget, we started out, you know, we hadn't approved it, and as time has gone on, there are adjustments that need to be made. So, looking at this upcoming year, we're actually allowed to do basically unlimited. We're gonna try to do maybe one every other month, maybe one a quarter, but just to try to capture all the adjustments that need to be made up to a certain point and give them to you kind of compiled. So, just to describe what it is. First, specifically for this one, there were a handful of items that were purchased with last year's dollars, but the invoices didn't come in until later. So, we have to do an adjustment where the money basically from last year falls to the bottom line, goes, in essence, goes back into the bank account, and then we're able to scoop that back up if approved and adjust, just plus up this year's budget for the exact same amount so that we can get those invoices paid. You have the detail in your packet. Several of them were things that the Alderman actually bought with in your money, just to try to get, use that for the city. Some uniforms, some things that you'll recognize, such as the street sweeper that you approved. There's some repair parts, a few equipment, fire department type of things as well. Then, once we get that part approved, there's also a second piece, and that's new things that were basically unforeseen with the budget itself. They weren't last year's money that we got the invoice now. They're new things that just came up that maybe we were covering at bottom line within a department and need to do the adjustment. Maybe they're just plus ups for things that just popped in, such as the Takoni air conditioning replacement. Got a couple quotes, and that needed to be purchased. And then something that, like you guys approved last time, the police departments, AGJ.
Let's go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the first quarter budget amendments as presented.
I just wanted to ask one little question about that Takoni, because Christine and I met yesterday, and I got a thorough explanation of stuff. Do we have a threshold by which items need to be approved? In particular, the Takoni AC seemed to have been an emergency. Do we have something like that in place where if it's a taken item over two grand, five grand, I'm not certain where we would have to approve something?
We treat emergency cases different, but most everything comes here to be approved. I mean, it will definitely come before the board. Emergency purchases are separate, and that would be handled accordingly.
Because I was recalling, we did that for the police station, and we approved it, but this one we didn't. It was just three quotes went out, so I didn't know the difference, if there is a difference.
What is it, Vicki? Under 75, you go with, or under 70, go with two quotes, and you move forward with that.
Five thousand and under, you can have one quote. Seventy-five thousand and under, you can have two quotes. Everything over that has to be bid.
And then that's when it comes to us to approve them?
It still gets approved regardless. It comes to you before any of its purchase, unless it's an emergency purchase that has to be done before it gets here. All of it has to come before you get approved.
I just feel like we did it backwards this way versus how we did with the police AC. That's all. I'm just trying to get a clarification.
That'll be on the second. The first is just on the quarter adjustment, first quarter budget amendment adjustments as presented.
I'll make a motion that we take the first budget amendment.
As presented.
First quarter?
Yep.
I got a motion by Alderman Hinton.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wade. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then the next would be addressing that, and with the budget amendment, purchase of vehicles and equipment, which is what Christine was addressing.
I thought Takoni was under the one we just passed.
Yes, Takoni was on the one that we just passed.
First presentation, okay. So this is on the day.
Right, they both ultimately hit the budget the same, they're plus ups.
It's just one we approved beforehand, and then the Takoni one we're approving on the backside, and I was just asking why the difference.
Right, and it's probably in the definition of emergency, and the time it takes to pull everyone together for.
All right, so, do we have a motion to approve authorized budget amendments to fund purchase of vehicles and equipment from the general fund and 2% fund and enterprise fund as presented in the attached proposal?
Is that approved?
Okay, got a motion by Alderman Pfeifer. Second by Alderman Dennis. All in favor?
Aye.
Now we move on to General Public Comment. Public is invited to address the board for five minutes each for a maximum period of 30 minutes. Identify yourself.
Jane Lewis, Warfie. I need to go back to the 21st because I asked a portion on item 5A that's authorization to award an executive contract and a ready documents for the city's logging services. And key thing is that, do we have an individual that is a procurement specialist that supports at Ocean Springs on staff? And the reason why I ask this is because that that individual, first of all, has to be qualified to do that job. And you guys do ultimately make the decision after everything has been presented to you, but most importantly is that an individual that's on staff needs to be qualified to do that job. And in doing that job, I want to give you key points for you. Not trying to tell you how to go back in and move on forward, but I'm just want to give you a bit of advice. I don't set the record straight up front, okay? Okay. A minimum qualification with a bachelor's degree in administration, supply chain management related field, or equivalent combination of education and experience, at least two to four years of aggressive responsibility procurement purchasing, contract administration, experience, public sector, municipal procurement experience, strongly preferred, strong negotiating communication, written or oral, analytical and organizational skills, proficiency in utilization of the Microsoft Excel, Word, Outlook, and familiarity with Person, E, R, P software, and municipal purchasing system, ability to manage multiple priorities, maintain, attain detail, and meet deadlines, and operate in a cooperative team environment, high ethical standards. Very important for the simple fact is, is this, that a lot of times when you're dealing with monies for cities, and someone come to you, you want to make definitely sure that you don't get caught in a catch-22 because someone took you to lunch, or you have a buddy with somebody, and that buddy had a buddy with somebody, so they knew somebody, that's how they go back in and come back in and get a contract awarded again. Ethics is a very important. One of the key things that this board did at the city was very powerful, all those who ran for office this time, was the fact that accountability and responsibility, very important. We have to be accountable to the citizens in doing what we need to do and making sure that we are good stewards of Ocean Springs citizens' money. Thank you very kindly, have a nice day.
Thank you, Mrs. Pennings.
Anyone else like to address the board?
I'm sorry, I apologize. I really apologize for this one. I need to know what happened on Ocean Springs, I mean, School Street, the repaving. The sidewalk is gone.
It'll be back. They repaved the road, and they went ahead and paved over the sidewalk, because the sidewalk was actually below the road. And when the striping comes, all that will be detailed out. There will be a sidewalk.
Okay, they worry about the dip that's right there.
That's gonna be marked also. Just slow down before you hit it right now, but it'll all be repaired.
And also, there is a drain that's on the south side of the street. I almost hit it the other day, and he can tell you at the corner of the line.
By the southwest corner?
It's on by the, it's the south.
By MLK, right there off the corner.
It's, no, no, it's further back this way, further back east. It's brown, you can't miss it. It's the only drain that's in the street.
Okay.
It's where the sidewalk's gonna be. Stephen's working.
It won't be in the road, it'll be in the sidewalk.
All right. Thanks very kindly.
I'm not sure where that is. I'll go look for it. Okay, anybody else like to address the board?
Hi, Brian Lewis. Word one. Last meeting, you all were discussing an issue that you tabled about the 1515 parking garage on Government Street. So, a few of us, a few people in the media, actually, were all expecting it to be on tonight's agenda, and when it wasn't, I figured I would ask about it, and I just have a couple of questions, and I hope that one of you will address it during the Alderman's Forum. When Ocean Springs first applied for the $8.8 million in Gulf Coast Restoration Funds, the public application stated clearly that the parking garage was going to be owned by the City of Ocean Springs, and that transfer of that ownership was going to take place after the construction was complete. And, you know, that promise was made in a public application, and I believe that that's the application that was used by the GCRF that went through the legislature and eventually signed by the governor. But as soon as Mayor Holloway took office in 2021, that deal was, using his word, reworked. And in August of 2021, he presented an MOU that was approved, August 17th, 2021, and that MOU with the developers actually kept ownership with the developers and removed the fact that Ocean Springs was originally going to own the parking garage. Instead, Ocean Springs was going to pay for the parking garage, all of the maintenance, all of the security, all of the insurance, and it was going to remain in ownership by the developers. So, since then, there's been a couple of subsequent lease agreements. One of them was presented June 17th on the last administration's last day, and if you recall, there was kind of a tip towards the end about Mayor Holloway wanting to have that signed right away, and I believe then Alderman Cox, who's now mayor, argued that y'all should wait. A new version of that lease agreement popped up October 25th. Both of those lease agreements had something that the original did not have, and that was a subordination clause, a mortgage subordination clause. The original memo of understanding did not have this. This appeared in June of this year. And it basically means that the developers who now own the garage are able to use that asset to make loans, and use it as collateral for loans. And they can use that money for whatever they want, because it's not in the lease agreement, any stipulation on how they can use it. So, they get a loan for $8 million on this garage and buy another project, or fund another project, or buy 10 Lamborghinis, or whatever it is that they want to use that money for, and they don't pay those loans back because the business deal goes bad, there is no protection for the City of Ocean Springs if that garage is foreclosed on. In fact, we lose all rights because of that clause. There's also nothing in the lease agreement that says that they can't sell it tomorrow, and I apologize if I missed that somewhere in the MOU, but I know for certain, the subordination clause was added into this lease agreement, and I can't figure out why. A lot of people can't figure out why that was added, because it doesn't benefit the city at all. It only benefits the developers who now have $9 million worth of capital that they can access when they didn't before. And if we were gonna own it in the first place, it begs the question, why we're even in this partnership with a private corporation when the City of Ocean Springs could have just done the GCRF grant application itself and owned it outright? You don't have to be in a public-private partnership with somebody. So, it doesn't really make sense to a lot of people that I've discussed with this, and I haven't heard any answers. I know that you've all discussed insurance costs, but you haven't discussed the part where they can mortgage the place out the very next day after you sign this lease agreement, and it could be closed on next month, and the city doesn't own it. The new owners, who buy it either through auction or however else they acquire it, can knock it down, they can turn it into a private garage, and the city can say nothing about it if they sign that lease agreement you guys have on your tables right now. So, I'm hoping that one of you will address these questions during the Alderman's Forum, so people like me have something to write about, and people in Ocean Springs have some answers to some questions. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Does anybody else like to address the board? Come on up, guys.
Little more, word two. I think everybody knows this weekend's gonna be Peter Anderson Festival. I just want to, ahead of time, thank Public Works. It's like their busiest weekend all, you know, all year, and we couldn't do it without them, of course, the police, the fire, and the mayor, and all the Aldermen we sure appreciate all. It's a citywide event, and it's gonna be a great one again this year, but y'all coming out and supporting our artists and our vendors and different people, it's gonna be a great weekend, and just again, thank you all for your total participation. We couldn't, the chamber puts it on, but we couldn't do it without every single one of you, so thank you very much.
Now, I imagine they're still looking for volunteers. If anybody wants to volunteer.
Cynthia, our mortgage agent, right?
Especially the three o'clock more in the morning ones.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Cynthia wanted me to remind everybody that we have vendors coming from just about every state in the Union. We have over 400, and we have some apparently from foreign, so anyway. She wants you to have a good time, because a lot of work goes into it. Thanks for all the help that you all have given us and all the support. I'm gonna need you helping three o'clock in the morning. Darren, I'm depending on you. Matt, yes.
I gotta make up for it, huh?
He's gonna pull me midnight, chief.
Of course, Wade, and of course, little nurse Julie, but any of you know of us are welcome to come out and help us. We have a good time, that's what it's for, but the most important thing out of it, it lets you know what the community is really doing with these events. We don't have the big shipyard and other construction sites. We have festivals. That's our main source, so it's important that we keep that going. And it's one of the biggest and best festivals in the United States. I'm proud of that, so please come out and enjoy it. We apologize for any inconvenience we caused anybody in the areas where the traffic has to flow, mainly your ward here. And in fact, all of it's your ward, especially on the street by, let's see, Soto. What's the next one?
Havens.
And then, well, there's a few of them anyway. But any, oh, I guess the one that we have the most hilarious time with is the donut shop. You're not gonna stop somebody from getting a donut. You can put a barricade up as high as you want to, they're gonna find a way around it.
A barricade.
We're trying to accommodate them, but the police department have been really generous with them and helped us with that. Anyway, listen, I want to tell you something. Police Department, Public Works Department, Fire Department, and the Rec Department, they all help us like nobody's business. These girls right here, these ladies, help us. Everybody does, and of course you do too. That's what makes it so special, so please come out and enjoy it. My pleasure.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Wilson. I own Wilson Fireworks. I'm here to talk to you about what happened to my company through the city annex of the property I was on, and to ask if you guys would please consider to allow me to go back on the property. Excuse me. I have been in business in Ocean Springs for almost 15 years. Most of my family grew up running the fireworks store in every one of these counties on the coast, all the way up to Higgins now. And we have always, always put everything we can into taking care of where we're at. care of where we're at. We make sure to put signs everywhere of whether or not to shoot, you know, stay away from the birds, the hatcheries, you know, we watch the environment. We try to help collect and ask our customers to pick up behind the tents when they shoot. The thing is, is that, I understand annexing and the reason why we did it, I get that, but I was under the impression when it all went through that everybody that was on their property, and whatever property they were using, would be able to continue to use that property. And I was actually told by the last mayor that that was true, but since I did not have a building, that they didn't have to worry about me or Mr. Cooper, which is not fair. Since me and Mr. Cooper have been here for over almost 15 years, have invested our lives into this city, and, you know, we've not only been in the construction, but we've also, I actually tried to build five years ago. I got approval by the county. I went through all the hoops and hollers. I got plans done, I got everything done. And unfortunately for me, Mr. Nairmore, his son decided to keep the property and not sell it to me, after many, many, six months worth of work it takes to go through. So, I was still trying to invest into the city, and not to mention, you know, I probably hired half of the football team and trained them and taught them how to sell, and how to approach people, and how to talk to people, and, you know, I've used their backs too, no offense. But the point I'm trying to make is, is that I have a arrangements with the new owners of the property, and we want to continue to keep this property going, but I'd like to continue to still have my fireworks twice a year. And what the deal we've made is, is that I'm going to put up some money every, twice a year for my store, and that money will turn that property right across the street from the Fire Department, it will turn it into a community area. We're going to be putting fire, different things like tables and some fire grills and stuff for the community to come out when I'm not there to be able to use this property for the communities. We're looking at tables, things like that. But the whole point is, is that I've not done anything wrong here. I followed all your rules. I followed all your requirements, and I've been a good citizen to this city. And I have donated so much to many different programs, including letting people use the property for voting last year, and things like that, every single season. And I am asking you to please go back and finding your heart to let me back on this property because it has financially devastated my family to the point that I might possibly lose the company altogether because that profit that I was receiving from this store, I've got billions, I've got people, you know, and I also have two boys that are begging you to let them work this December. They come back every year in December. They've been with me for, one eight and the other ten years, and they're both in college now, and one's an engineer, and he won't sit his job every December when he comes back to be with his family in December. So, please, let me continue to stay in this community, and let me continue to help out the rest of the community, and enjoy the fireworks. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to?
Good evening, everybody. I'm the owner of the land that was purchased from Mr. Nairmore. It's actually Gulf Park Estates that, I think, their parcel doesn't have a technical zoning designation right now, but this, when you hear this woman's story, right now, we have the government putting a woman out of business altogether. And my name is Ayman Wahid, and I live in Ward one for the record. So, right now, we have a case through a technicality of the government putting this poor woman out of business here. So, you know, she reached out to me and asked, would I be okay with her operating that fireworks stand on the piece of property that has been there for almost 20 years? They've been doing that out there in the county, but technically now it's the city. So, you know, I had no problems letting her just do what she had to do, like everybody in Gulf Park Estates really goes there to shop for the fireworks. And I just don't think it's morally right if we can't find a solution. It's not like this is the first time. It's been there for 20 years. This is her livelihood, and hopefully we can find some solution. I know the city has a ban or prohibition on fireworks altogether, but that being said, that was county, that was the county. It is de facto still pretty much like the county. It doesn't have any zoning designation as of now. It was R1 for the first year after the annexation, but without adopting, its proposed designation is CMX-2, so it does allow for commercial activity. So, the authority of what to do here, if she's allowed a various requests, is on this board, and if she is, then I would work it out, all the stuff that needs to get done to allow her to operate the stand. And, you know, that being said, whatever minor, small profit I make is probably gonna be reinvested back into the community for, like, community events, you know, holding things, holding events that reduce neighborhood tensions. Gulf Park Estates has a lot of tensions right now, and, you know, that money will be reinvested back into reducing neighborhood tensions and bringing the community class together. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board?
Yes. Jay, Ward 10, Ward 3. Two things. First, I want to give a shout out to Alderman Hinton for, a couple weeks ago, there was a spill, some kind of spill at the corner of Margaret the King Government. He was out there on his off time, I guess, on his personal time, just directing traffic, so good job. That's something I'd like to see. I see Alderman Wade out doing stuff as well. So, just, you know, something I wanted to say publicly. Thank you. Second thing is, I want to talk about the public records request fee again. Is it still, are we still having the $35, $37 fee for public records requests? I remember when I was mayor, sitting in that office, and Mr. Stringfella came to me. I can't remember what the subject was about, but we were talking about, you know, there was something, kind of a little controversy, we could say, and talking about somebody was wanting some deceased records or something. And I said, look, I said, my general rule of thumb, if it's something that they could get through a public records request, just give it to them. Right? While they can jump through a bunch of hoops, when it's something that they're gonna get anyway, they can get in here, just sit down with her in your office and talk about it, and, you know, if it's something that they can legally have through a public records request, let's do it. And that's called transparency. Now, I remember we had election not too long ago, and we were supposed to save O S, because the mean old mayor in last administration put all these hoops to, you know, keep the public from finding out what's going on, apparently. That was the narrative. So, this board is majority new, and they could vote to have that changed. So... Is Ayman O S or not? I think there's a lot of hypocrisy going on here, so. Sorry for the rambling. Everybody said I was, last year, the time I was here, I was rambling, so I just wanted to come and ramble a little bit more. Okay. So, Z, are we having, are we just gonna keep going with the same?
Right now, it's staying intact. We'll address it.
Well, you know, that's, I was told by many people in this city that it was done explicitly to discourage people from doing public records. So, just so everybody know, that's the policy of this city right now. If anybody, if any investigator, journalist around here want to talk about that, that's the position of this city right now. Save O S.
Anybody else want to address the board? All right, and now we'll move on to Mayor and Alderman's Forum. Alderman, do you have anything?
Yeah. I'll address the parking garage. There's seven of us up here. We're still working on the lease. We're trying to work out the best lease we can for the city. You know, as far as some of the comments that EBR had to mention, the... Mention about the city, potentially the property bankrupting. I'm sure we'll look at that. That was a good comment. But there's seven of us up here. We're still working on it. And then I want to mention Chick Cody, say a prayer for his daughter and his wife, going through some health complications right now, so we can all say a prayer for them. I think that would be beneficial. As far as the fireworks, I think we can look at that also. That's something that, you know, unfortunately, the lady, you know, inherited, but we can look at that. I don't know what we need to do, David, but if we could look at that and see if we could do something to help them out. That's all I have.
Thank you, Steve. Alderman Dennis?
Um, two things. One, I just want to say, we continue doing the same things we did on Bowen, talked to some of the police, but residents were really happy with what was done during cruising the coast. They were able to get in and out of their own driveway for the first time, they said, since some of these festivals has started. So, got some feedback on that, and they were really happy with that. As far as transparency, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to hiring a part-time person to just try to get those kinds of things out, as far as going and doing the research for documents that are requested at some point, but I think it's something we could talk about down the line because I certainly don't want the clerk having to do it, and some of these people that have a lot on their plate. But I think that if we could hire a part-time person two, three days a week to take that job and run down that stuff, it might be something to think about and look at.
Alderman Wayne?
I'm good.
Alderman Pfeifer?
Yeah. So, Alan, we're gonna talk about the sand on East Beach. Do you have an update on when we might get sweeper? I know you've had some breakdowns of equipment.
Sweeper run through there today twice. What we're gonna do, we talked to the county about pulling the sand down the lower, on the backside of Seawall. That's the issue, is the sand's so hot.
Yeah, it's taken up half that south side of the road.
Yeah, I got some rookie operators, and that's a good place for them to be practicing. So, we're probably gonna start two of them down here more and more, then we'll start pulling the sand back.
Okay. And then, you were going to see about striping, because I've had a few residents reach out, especially at night, they can't tell the edges of the road.
Yeah, I talked to Jim O'Neil, he said he would bring it to them and see if the striping's done through the county when it's paving.
So, they'll...
I hadn't heard back from Jim O'Neil.
Okay. You'll let me know when you hear something? All right. Anybody have any information on possible funds for sidewalks headed to East Beach, Holcomb, Halsted? I heard a rumor, but I don't have any way to confirm. Is there any movement on?
There will be a request for that.
There will be a request.
This legislative session. We ask that pretty much every year. That's our standard.
A resident thought maybe there was already something in the works. I was just trying to...
We did have sidewalk money, but it's, we spent it. It's...
That's when we finished around town.
Yeah, the only other sidewalk money is the sand beach. It's only available for East Beach. It's stopped.
Yeah. Okay. And that's all I have.
All right. Alderman Matt?
So, I failed to mention on the consent agenda letter of my opposition to the tree removal on Riley Road and the one for the Inville for the Chick-fil-A development, and the one on Riley due to driveway placement. Just wanted to express my disapproval of those two. And I also wanted to thank Alan for going around recently and looking at drainage issues in Ward 6, getting a plan together, especially on Berwick and around the home sale. So, I wanted to thank you for your time on the weekend to look at that. Appreciate that.
Is that it? Now, Mr. Hinton?
All right. I'll start off. Like to thank Public Works for reaching out and getting the company to come in and clean up, and freshen it up. Looks really great. Like to see the new signage when it gets done. And also, to the landscaping of Public Works, to freshen up all the flower beds in town, it looks really good. Really happy with that. There is one thing I've been thinking about, that with this annexation of Ocean Springs, I'd like to make a motion that we make an amendment to our 2010 comp plan to take in the annex area for rezoning. We need to go ahead and move forward with that.
Can you explain further what you mean by taking it in?
So... So, we need to adopt the annex area in our 2010 comp plan for rezoning. The previous administration was trying to get a draft, a comp plan with the annex area, and that did not go anywhere, and we need our 2010 comp plan to be amended to take in our annexed area for rezoning.
So, we would rezone at the time, is what you're asking, that we go ahead and rezone?
We've gotta go ahead and get the ball rolling with our 2010 comp plan to take in the annexed area.
Adopt it as is, and then rezone it after that.
I'll second your motion.
Got a motion, Alderman Hinton, same, Alderman Pfeifer. All in favor?
Aye.
You approve?
So, you're talking about discussing moving forward.
Yeah, it's taking our, it's taking our 2010 comp plan and bringing in annexed area within that to allow the rezoning of it. So, it's discussion. Right now, there's no mechanism to move forward.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you vote?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, that's it. And that all you've got?
Yep.
All right. Thank you all. I just have one thing to congratulate Mr. Stephen Farnsworth on his new hire as the Assistant Director of Public Works. Alan?
He's pretty excited.
Good deal. You let him know this morning? Congratulations. We're forward to working with him.
Do you need a new drainage supervisor now?
I think I have one in-house.
We gotta just keep filling the spot.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am?
I may.
You may.
November 11th is Veterans Day, and all veterans and their families and coast residents are invited to annual Veterans Day observance at the Mississippi Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Ocean Springs. It's on Tuesday, of course, it's November 11th, a week from today, and it's at 1:00. And I personally just want to say thank you to all of our veterans for your service and for your sacrifice of you and your families. And I hope you'll take advantage of opportunities to go celebrate our veterans.
Did you say 11:00?
Uh, 1:00.
Any other announcements? No, that's it. Okay. We'll move on to executive session. The motion to go into closed session to determine the necessity of getting... Alderman Hinton, same, Alderman Pfeifer. All in favor?
Aye.
Go on to closed session.
Uh-huh.
He called Siri in my phone. He calls there. Thought it hurt Siri.
Okay, that's why I was saying, look, I'm taking care of it, but I thought I'd get it going. You're gonna work, I just basically took that handout and told it to... I just gave him like a rough idea of an agenda that we can follow, and I gave her my handout, so if you want to give her your handout, move it away in the packet. That's what I was thinking. wanna give her your handout, move away in the packet, that's what I was thinking.
It would be, it would be.[1367.13]